Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if everybody would like to take their seats, we're gonna get rolling here in a... Bring the Village Board meeting, June 13th, 2022, to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Clerk Cole Hagan, call the roll, please.
Lawson?
Here.
Batia?
Here.
Anastasio?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Toxie?
Here.
Hewitt?
Here.
DeGroot?
He's here. So let's move on to public comment and input. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the President to recognize you. State your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Can we hear from Kelly Gallagher?
Kelly Gallagher, 46, 22, Knollwood Drive. On March 4th, 2022, I received an email from Mount Pleasant Village Attorney Christopher Smith, a copy of which I have provided to each of you. The email states that Mr. Smith promises not to sue me if I meet the six conditions he lists below. I'd like to direct your attention to the fifth condition, which is, and I quote, "Five, you will refrain from publicly referencing me in any comment, regardless of whether such comment is written or spoken." The email from Mr. Smith then goes on to say, quote, "If you fail to do any of the above, I will quickly proceed with a lawsuit against you and seek damages for the harm you have caused my professional reputation." I want to repeat this so that there is no confusion. The Mount Pleasant Village Attorney demanded, in writing, that I, a resident of Mount Pleasant, the municipality in which he is employed as a government official, demanded that I never refer to him publicly in any written or spoken comment or face legal action. Does that sound remotely constitutional to you? But what is perhaps most concerning is that the Mount Pleasant Village Attorney actually followed through on his threat. Christopher Smith did file a lawsuit against me. March 8th, Ms. Gallagher, because you have not complied with the terms of my March 4th, 2022 email, I have filed a lawsuit against you in Racine County Circuit Court. It's safe to say that by now we all know the result of Mr. Smith's efforts. On May 24th, Judge John Friedrichson dismissed this bogus lawsuit with prejudice because Smith had failed to prove evidence of both defamation and actual malice. It was not a career-making day. While both the village and Smith claimed his lawsuit against me was a private matter, Judge Friedrichson ruled Christopher Smith is a public official. His complaint originated from his words and actions taken in his official capacity as village attorney. The email account he used to send me an unethical and unconstitutional threat of legal action for publicly speaking or writing his name is irrelevant. Village Attorney Christopher Smith attempted to violate my right to free speech. He threatened legal action and then followed through with his threat. He sought financial gain for himself by seeking punitive damages against me. For this, Christopher Smith has disqualified himself to serve as a public official in this community. No resident can feel free to engage in public debate with him at Village Hall. You should be shocked and dismayed, enough to take action. But, in reality, I expect you to do nothing. However, complaints have been submitted that will require investigation and potential action at the local level and beyond. I am here to let you know that as embarrassing as this whole interlude has been for the village, it is not over. Thank you.
Okay, can we hear from Dan Dimler?
Dan Dimler, 46, 22, Knollwood Drive. Over the years, I've come before the village board during public comments many times. I've suggested that you stay in your lane: road repair, public safety, ordinances. I've watched you disrespect residents, treat them with malice, and violate their rights. I've seen residents cry and beg you not to blight their land, only to be ticketed by village police for trespassing on their own land at their own place of business. And how did you respond? You rewarded yourself with longer terms in office, believing you were doing so in the best interests of the health, safety, welfare, and morals -- so I can't get that -- of our community. Your overt power grab made clear that your uncaring attitude to the residents of Mount Pleasant would continue. You are the elected leaders of our community. You set the tone for how employees of our village view and treat residents. I submit, you have sown a toxic culture. This is why it took days instead of weeks to kill your term-length proposal. There is no confidence in this village administration. I believe this toxic culture gave village attorney Chris Smith the message that suing residents was appropriate behavior for a village official. I find it hard to believe that Smith's actions were done in a vacuum. Certainly, after Mr. Smith filed his lawsuit, you knew of his actions, and it seems that none of you intervened on your citizens' behalf. No one said, "Hey, Chris, we really don't like to sue our residents, even if they bug us." I think you probably cheered him on. Unfortunately for him and you, it took Judge Friedrichson no time to throw out Smith's lawsuit against my wife. The judge ruled that Smith is a public official employed by the village of Mount Pleasant. He said my wife is doing what responsible citizens all over the country do every day. They keep an eye on local government. He told the village attorney that this is what you signed up for. This is what all of you signed up for. We all know that Smith's lawsuit was designated to bully and silence Kelly, but the village attorney also demanded that she agreed to never publicly say or write his name or face legal action, and then he sued her. He used his position to intimidate her and threaten her with punitive damages. He attempted to violate her rights. Village Attorney Christopher Smith must be held accountable for his actions as a public official. It is your job to represent and respect all of your constituents, even the ones you don't agree with. You need to start by firing Mr. Smith.
I have nobody else signed up to speak. Anybody else wishing to speak? There being nobody else, we'll move on, and we'll go to... We've got a presentation for the Cop House recognition. Maureen?
It's not very often that the village of Mount Pleasant is recognized by the major news channels out of the city of Milwaukee. We're lucky that Carol Meekins, who does a segment called Positively Milwaukee on WTMJ-4, recognized the outstanding work that our police officers do at the community-oriented police house that we have in Mount Pleasant. We have Rachel here, but I think for now, we're gonna cue actions -- or the video will speak louder than any words that I can use tonight, so we're gonna cue the video. Dustin?
There's no better way to learn about a community than to be a part of it. Police officers in Racine and Mount Pleasant take that advice literally. Ubah Ali spoke to them about how.
Mount Pleasant Police Officer Rachel Gardiner spends a lot of time with kids.
A lot of them are from single-family homes and working family homes, so they don't get a lot of the attention that they would get as they do here.
Gardiner works at the Mount Pleasant Cop House. COP stands for Community Oriented Policing.
We work with the community, and we help them fill their needs and work with them to build a trusting relationship.
One of the big needs is after-school programming for neighborhood kids. Gardiner says she and her partner at the cop house provide reading and writing programs, summer play camps, and even dinner.
We like to go fishing with them, go to sport games with them. We just try to keep them very active.
The Mount Pleasant Cop House is the newest in the area, but there are six more next door in Racine. Sergeant James Pettis says officers are stationed in those houses for several years at a time.
You have the opportunity to build positive relationships through positive interaction with kids and with community members.
Each house has a slightly different approach, and officers don't just work with kids. Sergeant Pettis says COP house officers have helped settle longstanding disputes between neighbors and have assisted people dealing with landlord complaints. Community partners like Orchestrating Good have provided the house with free food, pantries, and back-to-school haircut events. Pettis says community police work like this has powerful results.
Be impactful, longstanding. This is not a temporary solution to crime reduction and quality of life improvement. This is a sustainable, long-term solution for us here.
And Officer Gardiner says she might be more impacted than the kids. She thinks about them all the time.
They're not just coming to work. I don't just work 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I know when all their birthdays are. I know when their soccer games are, their basketball games, their football games, and even if I'm not working, I'm gonna be there to support them because that's my relationship with them.
Because at the end of the day, this is what serving the community is all about.
This is, yeah, everything I got into being a police officer for.
And those officers say the house has helped reduce crime, but more importantly, they helped create stronger, tighter communities, and they've made their playbook available online for other cities and towns who feel they might want to benefit from this type of community police work as well.
I hope you all have goosebumps like I do. Rachel, can you come on up? Rachel's always looking at ways to improve programming for our citizens that live in the village of Mount Pleasant, so she's gonna talk to us a little bit about another program, and I think we can all get our wallets out, because that's the best way to show appreciation for what they're doing, is to put some more money into it. But in any event, Rachel.
By the way, that's high praise from the news media. Congratulations.
Thank you. So the program that's in this video that we were talking about, Orchestrating Goods, is run by Rachel Contreras and Jessica Greb. So they provide food and other needs that people have. So we have toothbrushes, toothpaste, laundry stuff. It basically gives another fundamental for an officer when they come onto a call or anybody in the neighborhood that does not have food and stuff to basically -- it's our first line of ways for us to provide for them where before we couldn't. So I mean, we do have two good programs through Mount Pleasant, which is that the city of Racine Cop Houses also have Orchestrating Goods at some of their cop houses, and we also have Project Blue Heart that I founded, where we can provide hotel rooms and other necessities to try to help them until I can get them a long-term goal. But I mean, it's been a great program for us. Both of them have. We've used them several times already. So, yeah, we have good programs at the cop house. Our kids stay really busy. Summer just kicked off, so parks just started, obviously, with the great weather today. But no, we like keeping our kids active and staying active with our community. It's been a good couple of years down there.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Can I ask a question? You know, I'm sorry. I feel I'm really embarrassed right now that I don't know more about the cop house than I do, and I'm gonna assure you that I'm gonna learn more about it. I do know, the one thing I do know over the years is how it has served the community. When you talk about having, you know, you make calls and you have food available, and you have, you know, the simple necessities of toothbrushes and toothpaste and so forth. Do you have, like, a washer and dryer there? Do the kids come with dirty clothes, or...
So I do have a washer and dryer. I just don't have a hookup for it yet, so I'm working on that because, yes, the kids do need that, and it's a lot easier if I have it there. And teaching them, to me, that's important for them to know how to do that instead of me taking it to, like, a laundromat or something.
So in other words, you're not only teaching them basic daily, you know, chores around the home, but you're also helping them with their own needs.
Yeah, like life skills that they can learn outside that.
Why isn't it hooked up?
Because we don't have a hookup there, I guess.
We gotta find out more about that.
Yes.
I know a lot of plumbers and, you know, HVAC people.
Yeah, that would be nice, because we've been wanting to get that in for a while.
That I think we could probably help out with that, you know, get a community member to make a donation or to come and help you.
That'd be awesome.
So I'll get your contact info and send some feelers out.
Sure.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you so much for what you do.
But yeah, they like doing cooking and stuff, too, so we do a lot of that, so.
And I'm sure, I know we can't violate the open meetings law, but I'm sure if any of you would like a tour, contact Police Chief Matt Zones, and he can arrange a time when we're not doing programming.
Or just email me.
Yeah, there you go.
And I'll get back to you, and we can schedule something.
I was just down at the cop house last month. Officer Rachel is a beloved figure, but she does run a tight ship, so.
Yes. My kids are very good down there. The families are really good down there. They help out with a lot, so.
They're happy to have you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, you can't leave yet. I believe Trustee Rahm has a comment.
Officer Rachel, as the video says, I hope the other communities can also pick up and copy up what you do here and the Mount Pleasant police do. Mount Pleasant has been a -- I'm a believer, and I've seen that in everything we lead, and thanks to you and officers like you that you are showing the leadership, not only to our community, but to many other communities, especially in these times when we hear only the magpie news about the police. So thank you for all you do. Congratulations, and I wish they were more like you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Never give up. Never give up.
Trustee Hewitt has something to say, too.
I just want to say since day one, when the cop house got placed down there, the whole neighborhood started changing. President DeGroot and I have been down there, and we pounded a few nails in. I don't think they were all straight, but we did on a couple of the habitat houses. In addition to that, I have had residents initially come across the street when we were there in that area and everything, and too, and said, "Thank you. What a difference that this has homemade." Not, I mean, the cop officers before you have been down there and everything from day one and everything, and too. It really has made a big difference in everything, and too. And it's also have been very interesting with all the cooperation of a very well-known pizza place right down the street, how many times they have come up and have handed out food and all kinds of things and everything then, too, and I know they can continue to give you guys support. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, it's been great.
Officer Rachel, day by day, one-on-one, you and your program make a huge difference and impact people's lives in a positive way, and that's really what it's all about.
Yeah. I mean, I hope other communities get this by them because, I mean, it does impact your community and your policing, so I hope other areas can be as fortunate as ours to get it.
Go forth and do more good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move on to the consent agenda. Trustee Hewitt?
Mr. President?
Would I like to make a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Your motion, multiple seconds. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on to finance, legal, and licensing. We've got the discussion, possible action regarding the new temporary Class B license and three-day cabaret. Racine Youth Sports pop-up beer garden at Smolinski Park dated for June 23rd through the 25th, 2022.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a temporary Class B license and three-day cabaret to Racine Youth Sports for a pop-up beer garden at Smolinski Park, June 23rd to 25th, 2022.
Second.
Your motion, second. Any thoughts on that? Should be noted that cabaret, it's kind of a funny word, but really all it means is live music is gonna be at the event, and they need to... and they need to apply for that license. So regarding that Class B temporary license, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on to community development. We've got discussion, possible action regarding an amended and restated development agreement with Mount Pleasant 20V LLC, JES Mount Pleasant, 20V LLC, RES Mount Pleasant, 20V LLC, and MSP Mount Pleasant, 20V LLC, HSA Commercial Real Estate.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended and restated developers agreement with HSA Commercial Real Estate and its related LLCs as presented.
Second.
So I hear motion and second. Thoughts from the trustees?
I think that we have discussed this. This is a minor change, and we're restating it. So this has been in place, actually, for a while. So in view of that and their moving forward, I have no problem with supporting it, and I think we should move this forward, continue to move it forward.
Sam, would you concur with that? Or do you have anything to add over about what Nancy just said?
We'll try this. Ah-ha. Yeah, in large part, that's correct. This is a minor change to the development agreement with HSA, which is within TID number one. The previous development agreement had multiple different options based on how they proceed and a financing mechanism as well as timing. So this clarifies that now that we know exactly how they plan to proceed. One of the things it does is keeps a special assessment in place and sets the schedule for them to pay that off, as opposed to them having to pay it off in one full lump sum payment. So they'll pay that off over the coming years per the standard village special assessment ordinance. That will allow them to pull a building permit in the next couple of weeks for their next building. And the projections for the TID have tens of millions of dollars of additional development within the next five years related to this developer. So we look forward to making that happen. The public infrastructure involved is mainly related to the extension of Kilborn Drive between Carrington and County Trunk Highway V. Can I answer any other questions? But this is mostly just to clean up the TID for its remaining years.
Go ahead, John.
Sam, HSA was one of the big first developers that really did stuff in Mount Pleasant. Am I correct?
That is correct. The SADA building, that's owned by SADA Packaging, is an HSA development, as well as those other ones kind of adjacent to the south of 20 there. So this will be some of the first development. They have north of 20, but they were one of the original partner developers with TID 1 back in 2007.
They were sort of the trigger and the groundbreakers for what we can now say is really going out very well out there.
Correct. They've been good partners, and we look forward to continue working with them.
Thank you.
So on the matter of the amended development agreement, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Plan Commission, we've got discussion, possible action regarding a developer agreement for Spring Trail condominium.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a development agreement with Spring Trail condominium as presented.
Second.
Mr. Schultz.
This is a standard subdivision agreement for Spring Trail condominium, which is a condominium plat that you all approved earlier in the year. It's 32 duplex-style units that are north of Spring Street, just east of Stewart Road there along the tracks and some of the ATC power easements. So this is the final subdivision agreement, which guarantees a letter of credit, the public infrastructure that was all approved as part of the condominium plat and the associated utilities and things like that. Pretty standard. Special thing of note on this one is this development is doing two things. It's extending water from Spring Street up towards Giddings Road, which will open up a fair amount of development kind of north of Giddings Road in that area for future development, which is a positive thing, as well as along the power easement on the east next to the tracks there. They've already dedicated some land towards the village where they'll be building a multi-use pathway, which is on our master bike and pedestrian plan. So a couple of long-term goals are being solved with this condominium development, which is nice to see.
Very well. Any other thoughts? Not hearing any. So we've got the developer agreement. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Going to jump over to Tourism Civic Affairs. Trustee Claussen had a couple of things she wanted to talk about.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Earlier today, we had a tourism commission meeting, and there were a number of things highlighted there that I wanted to bring forth. Last weekend, there was a soccer tournament out at the complex in Franksville, and there were tons of soccer players. That park was full. This coming weekend, we will have watercross jet skis down at the beach, as well as lacrosse out at the soccer fields. So there's a lot of activity coming up this weekend. There was last weekend, now both down at the beach and Franksville, activities this coming weekend. And then the following, I think I reported once before, on the 22nd, is the big bike race out around the Foxconn properties. So there's a lot of fun activities taking place. We also then approved three requests for funding, one of which is for the Wisconsin Valley Mount Pleasant Bacon Fest, which is going to be at Roma Lodge. We also approved the Bluegrass Sampler, which is music, of course, and also the Racine Art Guild, the starving artist feast.
Fair.
Fair.
Fair, yeah, thanks.
Fair feast.
So we approved funding for those three entities, too. So there's a lot going on, and it's really nice to see activities coming back to normal and that we're able to help support them.
What was the second one? The Bacon Fest and then?
Bluegrass Sampler.
Oh, bluegrass.
Bluegrass Music.
So, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Anna Marie, so when we, when you say the Tourism Commission approves some funding?
Yeah.
Just curious, how are they going to use that funding? In other words, are they putting it into their promotional materials, staffing, volunteering, feeding volunteers?
It's a great question. There is an application form where they have to fill out detailed information for us financially, what their budget is total,